At this time, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting for March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Deaton, could you please let the roll call show that City Manager Zelnik is absent this evening? And we'll move on to the approval of the minutes February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Councilmember Kibble.
I'll move minutes.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of the minutes from February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the minutes, March first, two thousand and twenty-three. Councilmember Kennedy.
I'll move the minutes from the budget workshop on March first, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for the minutes of March first, two thousand and twenty-three. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the bills this evening? Councilmember Kennedy.
I'll move the bills. I'll support.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Approval of tonight's agenda? Councilmember Dill.
I'll move the agenda.
I'll second.
Any further discussion on the approval of the agenda this evening? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. We have three things on tonight's consent agenda: Parks and Recreation resignation from Erica Wilson, Police and Fire open house for road closure, and Housing Commission appointment of Jennifer Redfern. Councilmember Dill.
I'll move the consent agenda as presented by the mayor.
I'll second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. If we have anyone that was appointed from the consent agenda, please feel free to come up and comment during public comment this evening. At this point, we will open the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address, and please remember our two-minute time limit.
Good evening, council and Mr. Mayor. I have a few little items I want to share with you. Try to be as brief as I can and go promptly.
Excuse me, Mr. Richards. I just want to remind you, try and speak into the microphone. I've been getting a lot of feedback from the folks saying they can't hear our public speaker.
Am I okay now?
Yeah, you sound better. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, audience. First of all, I'd like to mention Erica Wilson's departure from the chairmanship of the Parks and Recs. They are the most active commission with the biggest budget in the city government, okay? And she's been on it twenty years, and she's done a wonderful job. We're sorry to lose her, but wish her the best in whatever she does. I frequently try to attend all the Parks and Recs meetings, but I don't make it to all of them. Anyway, moving on, I want to draw your attention one time here to our occupants of the building uptown where we used to have a restaurant and a bar, right on the corner of Lake and Ten Mile. Noble Appliance sign is on there. Just to letting you know, they're a pretty big outfit. I heard their radio announcements for advertising on the radio station, and they have three or four outlets in the metro area. So evidently, they're a pretty big concern, and they haven't done much of anything in the last eight to ten months on this location we have in our town. Now, I have my own opinion on this, but I'll let you people form your own opinions on this little situation. Okay, next up, the Parks and Recs, when I was there at the last meeting, last Wednesday, as I gathered, they were informed that they did not get the grant. It was turned down for the biggest deal of the three that they were applying for. That's the one on Eight Mile involving the bridge in Volunteer Park area, okay? But the smallest one...
Mr. Richards, go ahead and finish up your thought on this one.
Okay, the smallest one was approved, which I wasn't even aware existed, okay? And that's for the bridge replacement on the bike path right across from the Tube Mill, right next to the Jeffrey Potter dedicated section of it. In my opinion, all it needs is paint job or repair work and a paint job. But the grant goes for a whole rebuild of the whole thing, and they got that grant, which I wasn't aware of. Thank you very much, and I'll save the last part for the next session.
Okay, sounds good, Mr. Richards. Thank you. All right, if we don't have anyone else for public comment this evening, we will close the floor for public comment. We'll move on to the discussion of downtown with DDA Director Nate Mack.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. We had another winter farmer's market this past Saturday at the VFW. Again, it was very successful. That's to be expected at this point, though, with Diana and how good of a market manager she is. A quick recap on the carnival from Saturday, March fourth. Despite the almost foot of snow that we had for the event the night before, the event was a success. We had two vendors that weren't able to make it due to the weather, but, I mean, you know, two out of seven not being able to be there was great. And I need to give a huge, massive thank you to DPW for clearing the snow off of the street and the sidewalks in order for the event to be able to take place. Without that, we just don't have room for vendors to set up and anything. So, yeah, it was a good event. There were a lot of families downtown walking around, the street performers, the tarot card readings, the caricature artists, the, you know, Disney characters that we had, food vendors. It was all good. So, very thankful for the help that we received to execute the event and for people coming out to the event in downtown. Last week, I attended the Michigan Downtown Association's Advocacy Day at the Capitol in Lansing. I met with our state representative, Jason Morgan. I also met with House Speaker Pro Tem Lori Pohutsky, as well as Representative Stephanie Young, staff from her office. When I met with Representative Morgan, we kind of talked about issues pertinent to South Lyon. I mentioned Duovino opening and kind of some of the projects that we've been working on. So, he's on appropriations, so it's good to have his ear and speak to him and get familiar with him. So, I was grateful for that. And as I mentioned, Duovino, 135 East Lake Street, is finally open. They had the ribbon cutting last Monday. The restaurant officially opened last Tuesday, and I think every night it's been full-packed in there. So, that's great to see. It's a huge boost for the downtown, and it's going to be great. Another new business coming to the downtown in the old KB Sports location is Joe Diabella Furniture, which is like an antique furniture store. It's a really, they have really nice products. They're moving from New Hudson to downtown. So, I think that's about it for me. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Kurtzwell, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Yes, I think a lot of people are excited that Jodiya is coming to South Lyon. She also does consignment. So, I think a lot of people that are in that tier of retail that follow her extensively, this is a great, great addition coming to the downtown. So, I go there. I know her. Know some of the people that assisted her in New Hudson, and this is a real, real treat to get her in our downtown. She's just a real classy lady, and she's got a great store. So, there's a lot of excitement about her coming in. And I think she's closing her store either today or tomorrow, and is going to start the move like the next couple of weeks. So, it's going to be pretty soon, I heard.
Yeah, I think it's sometime in April, mid-April.
Yeah, she'll be there. I also wanted to sort of address, have you heard anything regarding the building on the corner?
I haven't recently, no. I've, you know, been trying to figure out what's going on, but I know that they're doing some work in there slowly, bringing material in, but other than that, I haven't heard much.
But I thought the building was up for sale.
Yes, they've continued to do work while the building is up for sale.
While the building is up for sale. Well, that makes sense. I'm not quite sure if it really does, but, I mean, you're either going to sell it and allow the new tenant to come in, or the new owner to come in and reconfigure the floor plan, or you're going to pre-spec it out and do whatever you want to do, hoping that the new buyer will be interested in the floor plan that you've chosen, or maybe there's something else going on. Maybe they've decided to hang on to it. I know there's frustration in the community about this. We all received an email from a resident, a good resident, but, you know, one thing we have to keep in mind is, you know, it's private property, and so you can't really tell that owner what to do with that property except by our zoning laws or whatever ordinances are in place that regulate the use of the real estate. So, and one thing I also wanted to add is that the current banking crisis that occurred last Friday and continued yesterday, it's going to be difficult to get money for large commercial loans, at least the bankers I spoke to today. It's not that they're denying the loans. They are going to sit back and wait and see what the new regulations are going to be coming out from the Fed regarding where they need to do some propping up. So, I would not expect a buyer to be able to come in and in thirty days be able to walk into a bank and get an $800,000 loan. Personally, I think that real estate's overpriced, but I just don't see that happening. So, I think we all have to have some patience with that corner and hope that the owner does the right thing. So, wanted to get that out there. We're all frustrated.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Anyone else have anything for Nate tonight? Okay. Thanks, Nate.
Thank you.
Move on to Chief Thorington and the fire chief report tonight.
Good evening. So, we're currently at two hundred and eighty-eight incidents for the year, which is pretty high. We're averaging a little over a hundred a month right now. Probably not sustainable. The storm definitely got us up, but today we had seven incidences. So, it's been busy. Duovino's kept us a little busy. They had their fire alarms when they first moved in, and it went off probably close to a dozen times, but it was something simple. Their dishwasher steam was setting off the alarms. They had somebody come in and fix it really quick, which I can tell from experience is uncommon. So, I appreciate them working with us so quickly to get it taken care of. Our ladder truck is done. Done, done. We went down for the final inspection. Not only flew down last Tuesday, it came back Wednesday. Everything was good. Now, we're driving the truck from there to Grayling end of this week. They're going to stick a rip, put a few shelves in, but most of the shelves are in sticker and radios, putting their radios hopefully the next two weeks, and then we can have this truck end of the month, early next month is the goal. Realistically, middle of next month to the end of next month is to keep it realistic, but I'm shooting for end of this month. We had a little structure fire over on Longfellow a couple nights ago. Our engine arrived pretty quickly, made interior attack, knocked it down pretty quickly, saved the front half of the back half of the building, bedrooms, at least they got their clothes and whatnot out of there and the surrounding structures. Township did come assist us for water, but really, our crew made an interior attack pretty quickly. So, did a nice job. We applied for a grant, Representative Slotkins, for the fiscal year twenty-four community project funding. Unfortunately, we need a truck. Our fire engine is nearing its end of its life. I'd like to put in for a grant for that. However, this year, they removed emergency vehicles from the availability. So, instead, we put in for five hundred Knox boxes, which is a lock box. It goes, you know, it's on our businesses in town, and they're keyed specific to the jurisdiction that protects and covers that business. So, only South Lyon has keys for South Lyon businesses. It'd be the same setup for elderly and disabled residents of South Lyon. We'd be, like the smoke alarms installed on their door. It's temporary, and we can get in their house without having to break in the door or do a welfare check. We can just let the police and things like that. So, hopefully that goes through. And that's a hundred and... Two hundred and twenty-five dollars a piece. It's a hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred dollar grant. So, hopefully that goes through.
Councilmember Hanson, go ahead.
Last meeting, Councilwoman Dill had asked about, you know, any plans for like social media or, you know, like getting the word out that the truck was on the way. Any thoughts or movement on that, or any plans that maybe you've come up with with some of the other members of your team, or?
Yeah, actually, I spoke with City Manager Paul about it not too long ago, and I don't know. We're going to talk to Nate, see if we figure something out, but it's in the works. There's nothing, you know, finalized yet. We've got a few weeks to figure it out, but we're definitely going to do some sort of splash, for sure. Maybe a parade.
Your posters are always well-received, so, you know, definitely looking forward to it.
Sure.
Anyone else have anything for Chief? Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Just got one comment. You want to know what is the most photographed picture of the fire truck in town? It's when you raise that flag and you put it on the ladder.
Yeah.
That is the number one photograph. So, keep raising that flag on that truck.
Absolutely. Can't wait to do it again.
Thank you. Good Americans over there in their fire department.
All right. Thanks, Chief. Great update.
Thank you.
Chief Baki in the fire, or excuse me, Police Chief report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. Just got a couple of things today. Recently, we had a rash of larcenies from autos the end of last month and a stolen vehicle at north end of town. Happy to say the vehicle was recovered in Detroit, and we're working with, our detectives working with Detroit to try to find out. They actually have a suspect in custody who was operating that vehicle, and some of the property that was stolen on the larcenies was also in that vehicle. So, we're working with them to try to find out where the remainder of the items are at, plus we're still working with, there was some use of credit cards. So, we're speaking with Detroit, their detectives, to figure out the suspects in those cases. And this is basically a public service announcement to remind everybody to lock their vehicles, take their keys with them, and take any items out of their vehicles worth value. These types of things are crimes of opportunity. We have individuals that walk down in complexes and in subdivisions and try door handles. So, just a reminder to everybody, lock their vehicles and remove their items. And second that I have is our truck should be done in a couple of days. It's almost done for the outfitting portion of it, which all the lights and the rigging inside and the radios, the computer is all, it's all going to be done hopefully in two days. Then, we're going to get it for graphics. I'm hoping by the end of next week, we'll have it on the road. So, we're happy to hear about that. And that's all I got for today.
All right. Anyone got anything for Chief Baki tonight?
Just congratulations for getting that truck.
Thank you. Still working on the car, but...
I was just going to say, take pictures and post them to social media. That'd be great to see.
Absolutely.
All right. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. We don't have any unfinished business this evening, but we do have new business. Number one, police-fire dispatch contract with City of Novi. I'll go ahead and take on the explanation here for Chief. The current agreement with the City of Novi will expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. The present rate is one hundred and fifty-one thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars. Novi officials have offered it to renew the agreement for three years with annual increases of four percent. The agreement includes dispatch services for both police and fire departments, as well as short-term prisoner lockup. The proposed, excuse me, the proposed rates are two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four sixty-seven, twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven sixty-six, and twenty-five, twenty-six at one hundred and seventy thousand, three seventeen. So, Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you. I would like to move to approve the three-year agreement as presented with the City of Novi to provide dispatch and lockup services for South Lyon Police and Fire Departments.
I'll second.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kurtzwell, supported by Councilmember Kennedy. We do have Chief here. If anyone had any questions, Councilmember Kibble, go ahead.
Not a question, but when I started being on council, this contract was above forty-eight thousand dollars. So, there was some inflation going on.
Your hair was black. All right. Does anyone else have any questions for Chief? All right. City Clerk Deaton, could you lead us in a roll call vote?
Moser?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
El Chat?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
We move on to the budget this evening. Did anyone have anything on the budget tonight? Okay. We will reopen the floor for public comment. Please remember to state your name and address, and mind our two-minute time limit.
Hello, Carl Richards, three ninety Lennox again. I have something, the last item I wanted to mention to you. I think it's very important that you know this. Like somebody said once upon a time, if you don't tell them, Carl, they'll never know. And regarding our bike path on the west end, all the way to Dixborough, last Thursday in the afternoon, I took it upon myself to take my three-wheeler and ride down. It was clear, first time in days, and observe what was there. The damage from the previous ice and snowstorm the previous weekend was tremendous. Okay, I'd never seen it that much before. Most of it's on our side, not the Tube Mill's side, but there's significant on the Tube Mill's side. I called and reported it to the Tube Mill, and they called me back Friday, and we discussed it. This is serious enough that, in my opinion, and I expressed it with Larry Ledbetter, that unless you can get a budget amendment, if necessary, to clean this up, I don't recommend that the kids and the weekend warriors in the April cleanup, creek cleanup, go at this. In my opinion, it's too dangerous. There's five major blockages in the Yerkes Drain itself from eight hundred feet back towards Dixborough, okay? And the creek breaks off at the water plant, the sewer plant. Anyway, it's serious, okay? You might be shocked to walk down it and see it. Anyway, my opinion that it's not safe, but thank heavens for our wonderful DPW that they did what they did. It was amazing that they were able to get it cleared up as much as they did. They had to use the power brush to get all the little debris out of the walkway before the next storm came in. Thank you very much, council. I hope you appreciate my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Richards. Okay, as long as we don't have anyone else here for public comment this evening, we'll close the floor for public comment, and we'll move on to the manager's report. Was anyone going to fill in for that? We have the printed copy. So... Okay, that will move on to council comments. Councilmember Dill, why don't you kick us off tonight?
All right. Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to Erica Wilson for her years on the Parks and Recreation Commission. Much appreciated. And welcome to Jennifer Redfern joining the Housing Commission. I think that that's a great addition. I also wanted to mention that when I was at Duovino on Friday night, I was very excited to see people walking around our downtown in the evening, going from one restaurant and to another, several people, and it was really, really great to see. So, I'm really hoping that if we can open up a few more things down there, that we can continue that. Also, I got contacted by Oakland County Treasurer Robert Whittenberg's office, and they asked me to read this on the record. I will be very quick. "The Oakland County Treasurer's Office in the final stretch of our foreclosure prevention efforts. The tax foreclosure deadline for the 2020 or prior year's taxes is on March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. That means if these taxes aren't paid off by March thirty-first, or any interested party hasn't entered into a repayment schedule with the treasurer's office by then, the property will be foreclosed. Since December of 2022, the treasurer's office has conducted over a thousand taxpayer assistance meetings to assist taxpayers with keeping their property by working with them to get on a repayment schedule and/or by identifying resources that may be beneficial to them in their situation. We are here to help and strongly encourage taxpayers to contact us before the tax foreclosure deadline if they have delinquent taxes for 2020 or prior tax years. Taxpayers interested in scheduling a taxpayer assistance meeting can call two four eight eight, I'm sorry, two four eight eight five eight zero six one one, or they may visit www.okegov.com/treasurer." Some of the resources available are the Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund, which is a state grant that will cover up to $25,000 of delinquent taxes from 2019 and forward, mortgage payments and utility bills. You must be for a primary residence and make less than a hundred, oh, I'm sorry, less than 150% AMI and prove COVID hardship in order to qualify. There's Financial Empowerment Center in the treasurer's office, which gives one-on-one financial coaching. And Lakeshore Legal Aid provides free legal services to people who are low income and seniors. Again, we are here to help, and we strongly encourage taxpayers to contact the treasurer's office if they have delinquent taxes. If taxpayers are interested in scheduling taxpayer assistance meeting, they can call the number that I just mentioned. Thank you. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Dill. Thank you. That's a good notice to get out. Councilmember Hanson.
I wanted to bring up several events that are coming up in the community. On Thursday of this week, March sixteenth, we've got the Cocktails and Community at the Corner Social. It's taking place at 7:00 PM to benefit Active Faith. It's a $10 ask per person, but it does include one drink. On March seventeenth, for St. Patrick's Day, Witch's Hat Brewing is having the St. Pats for St. Jude, where they're going to have a special food menu, as well as fourteen special beer releases. There's also currently an online auction to benefit St. Jude. So, you know, a great event that over the past decade, they've raised over 29,000 for St. Jude, and they're hoping to surpass 30,000 this year. On March twentieth, next week, Monday, from 12:00 to 2:30 PM at American One Credit Union at 128 West Ganson in Jackson, there is a Michigan Public Service Commission public comment period where you can voice your feelings regarding the recent power outages that we faced in the community. I would definitely urge everyone that can attend in person, that can. And on March 21st, I believe, there is actually an in-person or a virtual event also occurring through the Michigan Public Service Commission. On April 23rd, once again, I'll bring it up, the 19th Annual South Lyon Area Creek Cleanup and Earth Day Celebration that's occurring from 9:00 to 1:00 PM at the 400 McMunn Truck Parking Lot near Michigan Seamless Tube. Hope to see everybody there for that. Mr. Mayor, I did want to bring up something that I read about just recently regarding some of my council comments at the last meeting, and issues that I did bring up with DTE and our recent power outages. Over the weekend, there was a recent article that was published in Bridge, Michigan, confirming my exact fears that DTE did cut operations to meet profits months before our horrendous power outages. Now, Bridge, Michigan, did find out that DT's financial statements showed that the utility paid out 700 billion to investors in 2022, then paused hiring and maintenance to hit revenue targets and payout dividends. Job openings went unfulfilled, contractors were limited, and maintenance was postponed. And while many of our South Lyon residents were cold and without power, the CEO of DTE held a conference call with Wall Street analysts, telling them that the company had delivered strong financial results, continuing our excellent track record of creating shareholder value. Shareholder value over our residents. This is the worst of what is wrong with having a for-profit utility company. We must hold DTE accountable. We must hold DTE accountable, and I would urge our residents to take action. Write your state congressman, write your state senator, write your governor, write your congresswoman, write your senators. And when you have no further ink or feeling in your hand from writing, call them. Call your state representative, call your state senator, call your governor, and call your congresswoman, and call your senators. Do not stop until this company is held accountable. There needs to be a system of checks on the utility companies, and it's time to rein them in. Let's get to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would also like to thank Erica Wilson for her decades of service to the city on the Park and Rec Commission. Erica and I started out on the Park and Rec Commission together, and she's been a good friend over the years. And I truly, truly enjoyed her friendship, and her and Mike are just, her husband is just a wonderful, wonderful family, including her children. So Erica, I think I have a feeling I know where you're going. Believe me, my suitcases are packed, and I'll be following you down for a couple of long weekends. So enjoy life and best wishes to you and to Mike. I'd also like to remind everybody, you know, my favorite every year is to remind everyone about the Girl Scouts, and this year I'm bringing the lemon ups, and just wanted to let you know that these little girls stood out in the cold over the weekend, you know, down at the McCannity Center in Obray Bushes. Please, if you know a Girl Scout, please buy cookies. You know, they're hard-working young ladies, and this is just a great organization for them. So what I do is I freeze them and I give them to my girlfriends as birthday gifts. So please, there's a lot of uses you can find for these Girl Scout cookies, so help them out. Next, I'd like to bring to everybody's attention the Quilt and Fiber Show that is going to be here in the atrium. The setup is going to be this Friday, and the show opens on Friday, no, the show runs from March 20th through March 31st with the open reception on Friday, March 24th. These quilts are absolutely incredible. Some of them actually are out there in the hallway. And some of the smaller quilts are actually going to go on sale. And some of the quilts, there's an additional category of quilts that are being donated for this show in particular with the proceeds to be donated to Safe House. It's a women and children's center in Shelter down in Ann Arbor. So please do a good deed this month and help out women and children down in Ann Arbor at Safe House and take home a really nice quilt. And last, for St. Patrick's Day, there's no reason for anybody to leave South Lion for St. Patrick's Day because we have it all right here. We have all the fish fries that are going on in all the restaurants. We have St. Joe's, which sells out almost every Friday over at Its Fish Fries, and they start around 4:00. And then we have all the events that are going on in town. So please stop off if you can over at Aubrey's. Charles has got some great events over there. Corner Social's still going to have some events. I think they're going to be packed on Friday. We all know what's going to go on at the hotel, so let's sit back and stop in and see Cory and the gang, not to mention our good friend Mary Poole over in Lake Street. So get downtown, enjoy St. Patrick's. You can be safe and still have a good time, and you can do it right here in South Lion. So happy and safe St. Patrick's Day to everybody. Good night. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Some good reminders there. Councilmember Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight I want to welcome the new businesses that we have opening up in the City of South Lion. First, I want to welcome Duovino, the Italian restaurant that opened in the old RCA building and is managed by Tom Peluge. It took a few years and no shortage of challenges to get to the ribbon cutting last week, and we're certainly glad they're here. Next, I want to welcome the Schwegler Insurance Agency and its owner, Dan Schwegler, to the City of South Lion. Dan and his partners were responsible for renovating that RCA building and for bringing in Tom Peluge to manage the Duovino restaurant. Tom relocated his business here from Lion Township and has his offices on the second floor of the building. And finally, I want to welcome Jody Sherman and her vintage home furnishing store, Jodya Bella Home, which will be relocating to the former KV Sports location in downtown within the next few weeks. They offer an extensive inventory of home furnishings and will also be offering classes in furniture refishing. When I talked with Jody today, I said it's, you've been a little bit like Goldilocks and the Three Bears. This is her third location. The first was a little too broken up when she was down in Lion Township there behind greener pastures. The second one was just a little too small up in the church up in New Hudson. And I told her, I said, I'm sure this one is going to be just right, so welcome to the City of South Lion. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Kennedy. Councilmember Moser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a few thank yous to put out there today. First, Erica Wilson, thank you for your 20 years. I served on Parks and Rec as well with her, and she was very helpful when I was on that board. Next one goes out to the DDA and our Promotions Committee. They did an excellent job with the carnival, and I think this is shaping up to be one of our better events in the city. Really cool. The volunteers that signed up for our boards and commissions, I think they're finally getting full. And that's, it's very nice, and thank you so much for stepping up to the plate. And then my biggest thank you this week goes to our DPW. They, they kicked it. They went out, got rid of all that snow. Our roads were really clear, but then they came back and did all that snow removal so we could have carnival. Those guys worked their butts off, and I'm very appreciative of that, so. And that's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moser. Councilmember Kibble.
I agree with the Erica thing. She's, she has been holding down the fort for an awful long time. I had the good favor of restarting Parks and Rec with, when Wallace was in, as the mayor. So we got that thing going just in time to be able to get the bike paths and all that kind of stuff going. So that worked out great, and you can see how it spread, so that's terrific stuff. The, I have some good news in that I ended up bumping into the owners of the theater last week, and they're, they're planning on having a new venture over there. And I'll let them explain everything that they're planning on doing, but I'm just delighted to see some, a building that large go back online to end up bringing some feet into the downtown. So that, that really has me feeling good. So I'm looking forward for them to come, I'm hoping they'll come up here and kind of explain exactly what's going on, but I'm looking forward to what they have going. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Kibble. That's great news, and I definitely look forward to hearing an update about that down the road. I'll keep this brief, and we'll get out of here. I definitely want to thank Ms. Erica Wilson for her commitment to the community. You know, we've had a hard time, you know, keeping everything staffed with our volunteers for our commissions and boards, but we've really kind of hit a nice little upswing here. What I would tell you is if you've thought about it, or, you know, thought about getting to it eventually, and maybe you just haven't yet, a lot of times, once you break the ice with that and you get to meet these people that are working day in and day out, or even if it's just, you know, once a month in the community and meeting for these meetings, it's, it's a lot of fun. You get to meet some really great people. So if you're considering it, it sounds like spots are filling up fast. So get down here and get yourself some paperwork and get on. So, but that's, that's fantastic news. I want to thank Mayor Protem and Councilmember Kennedy for filling in for me a couple of weeks ago. It was a little under the weather. You know, working in the public schools and being in the public, I will get you eventually. So with that, I want to thank everyone for a great meeting, and I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Move to adjourn?
Have a great night, everyone.